...meeting of January 7th, 2015.
So moved.
And moved in second. Are there any changes? All those in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. Adjustments to the agenda?
We have none.
This is the portion of the meeting for persons desiring to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the board this evening that's not otherwise on the agenda? Seeing just administrators? Oops, I guess not. We'll move our board chair and get together. I'm going to turn that over to Tony. Tony was gracious enough to offer to host us for our social, our annual social gathering. And we picked a bad day, and then it snowed, and there was basketball conflicts and a bunch of other things. So you'll propose a new date to us?
Sure.
And then just let us know what might be the approval of you. We don't have to do it.
Yeah, you want to do it, like, because we're going to do an executive session anyway.
They don't. So you want to think about it and then just tell us? And then we'll, we won't take up time here trying to say who can do what.
We're setting the meeting dates. We have that part of the agenda.
But so thank you for being willing to do that.
Oh, absolutely.
And we will reschedule that because it's important for us to be together in a not-so-formal setting sometimes as well. So that's all I have. So personnel?
Under personnel?
First thing on the resignations. This evening, I am publicly announcing the resignation of Principal Yeeley due to retirement. Rui and I have worked together for 20 years. She had a three-year stint up in Orno. When I came here, Rui was the Director of Special Ed. Shortly after that, Rui was our first Director of Curriculum. And she was wearing two hats as the Curriculum Director and Special Ed Director, if you can imagine that in a school system with 2200 students. She left and went to Orno for Director of Curriculum there, then returned to be our high school principal and has served that role for 13 years. Right, Rui? 13 years?
Almost 13, yes.
Rui is the type of person that you'd want to hire in a heartbeat. She has an extremely strong work ethic, very dedicated, very loyal, truly committed to the profession in Hampden Academy when I was 22. The other thing I admire about Rui is that Rui doesn't necessarily just accept the yes and you go about doing it because there's a good conversation, sometimes a good debate about what's right, what's wrong, or maybe some other options. And I like that characteristic in people. So Rui is entering a retirement that's well-deserved after 38 years. Right, Rui? 38 years in public education, and she still wants to be connected in some option after she spent a little bit of time with R and R and reflection and moving on. So congratulations to Rui and thank her very much for her commitment to our district for two decades. Rui, you want to make any comment or anything?
Not too much.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have many celebrations before your departure. And I would just say that the building that we're sitting in has Rui's fingerprints all over it, too, and that was something that should be included in any tribute that we do with Mrs. Yeeley as well. She's smiling back there, so I think she's looking forward to her retirement.
Well, you know, I often email, I talk about this a lot, and he and I say that we have the most difficult jobs in the district. But the high school principal, when you think about a high school principal and a student body of 700 students and all the activities going on literally every night, and Rui's demeanor and commitment is that she expects herself to be there every night, that's a big job. And can you imagine, you know, when we sell a home, we move out of the home or whatever, but can you imagine moving out of a high school that you've been in that number of years with 10 portables and 75 teachers and another 50 support staff, whatever the case may be, and all the logistics that come with that? So you're running a high school, but you're building one, you're designing one at the same time. You kind of look back on that and say probably, how did I ever do that? How did I, how did I actually ever pull that off? All the vision and viddle meetings that we had. Is that me or you?
That appears to be you.
All the things that we had going on is just, is truly remarkable. And of course, we had consolidation going on at that time. We were awarded with a high-performing high school district, and we were exempted from consolidation. So Rui certainly has her fingerprints, no question, on a number of remarkable, extraordinary, exemplary initiatives and outcomes. Here is the timeline for what it looks like to find Rui's successor. And our desire is to have a person on board that will be here with Rui for about six weeks so that we kind of cross paths between the two. So we are currently doing up the advertisement. I hope to get that online in the middle of next week. I'm meeting with the faculty and staff here at the high school on the 25th of February to go over the protocol. And I enlisted from those people, members that may be interested in serving on the interview committee. I already have received two letters of interest. We will do that in the latter part of February, early March. And around the middle of March, we'll start screening applications. I would envision the first round of interviews to commence around the 1st of April, and then the second round of interviews around the 1st of March, because remember you have one week of vacation in there. And then the final selection of the people from the committee that will do onsite visits by our new board members. Typically, what we do, the final two or three, or maybe two or three, four candidates, we have teams that go out and visit the onsite where those people are employed, and we have a rubric, kind of like we talked about tonight, Jason, the need. We have a rubric to assess that. These people bring the information back, and then the committee ultimately comes up with a recommendation that they advance to make. My goal is to have the nominations of Board of Directors on June 3rd. And that will dovetail nicely because most people, if they are employed, have a 30- to 45-day notice where they have to terminate their contract, which means you come in about the middle of July. And the middle of July and Rui's retirement is August 31st, so that's the six-week period that we hope to bring that to fruition. If for whatever reason we miss that by a couple of weeks, then we would go two weeks to June 17th with a new endorsement. So I think this timeline is very workable. So I would ask committee members on the board, if you have an interest in serving on the committee, send me an email, and I'll let you know when the meeting's going to be held, and we'll bring that together. Maybe I might just add a little bit. Martha and Cindy, you've been on committees, right? Maybe you might want to talk about that so board members don't think, okay, do I want to do this or do I not want to do this? Any words of wisdom?
It's incredibly rewarding experience. Yeah, I think it's wonderful. I did the Assistant Principal, Rui asked me to be on it. How long ago was that? Probably three?
Actually, about three years.
Three years ago. And it was just incredible.
Oh, you were on the committee when you hired Rui.
Yep.
I will say, though, because a lot of this work happens during the day, you need to have some daytime flexibility.
Yeah. It can be, it can be time-consuming.
Hopefully, that means we get a lot of applicants.
Right.
Well, one would hope this would be a popular position, that we could get a lot of applications.
I would like, I would like to think it would be. I did have a conversation on Friday with Dick DeRoz, he's the Executive Director of the Main and Principal Association, because simultaneously, the elementary K-28 principal in Visey announced his retirement last night, to be running two principal search committees simultaneously. And Mr. DeRoz kind of indicated to me what I didn't want to hear, but what I knew, and that was that unfortunately, right now, there are not a lot of people that are aspiring to become administrators. It's really unfortunate, and very truthful with you. And particularly, high school settings, because I just described Rui's responsibilities here are immense. A lot of people who have taught for a number of years are very satisfied with that. They find that very rewarding, and the conversation's very good. And the question becomes, why do I want to leave that to become a high school principal, work year-round, be out every night, et cetera, et cetera? But, you know, it's like real estate agents tell me, when you're selling a piece of land, oh, it takes one person to buy the land. So it takes the one person that walks on water, right?
That we have to want.
To come to Hampden Academy. So if you're interested, let me know.
Yeah, of course. The more applicants that you have, the more likely you are to find the ones who walk on.
That's right. That's exactly right. So let me know if you're interested or if you have any further conversations, please give me a call, and I can discuss that with you. I have no nominations or transfers this evening, so we move into my report. And under the letter A, receiving and reading essential behaviors and outcomes, is Jason.
All right. Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves, our schools and community support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Jason. As you all know, one of the board's goals and objectives in our strategic plan is really to enhance our communication, which really brings into the presence of our webpage. Mr. Woodside is going to give you an overview tonight of one of the modules, I call it, that we're actually going to introduce on the website. And also, he'll talk about an entity that we're looking to do some work to bring on board in the early fall to enhance our website presence as well. Jeff?
Just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of some initiatives we're looking within the district to improve and increase our digital outreach of information to parents and the public within the district. So tools that we're looking at for using to accomplish these initiatives is a website overhaul. We've been in conversation with a number of website developers within the area. Right now, we're leaning heavily towards a company called Rainstorm. They're based out of Orno. Their user base is 65% within the state and 35% outside of the state. They're originally from Ohio. They moved back, moved here quite a few years ago. And one of the websites, they have quite a few websites that they responsible for, but a couple that you may be familiar with. One is the Bangor School District website, and then the Maine Adult Education website. So right now, we have two schools using Facebook. One is Reed's Brook, and they do a very, very good job. We have a Hampden Academy Facebook presence that has been around, but it really hasn't been updated. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback from the parents over at Reed's Brook on the use of that tool. So we're looking at establishing a Facebook presence for each one of the schools, getting the staff spun up on how to use it, what to put out there, and kind of set some ground rules on the utilization of that. Another tool that we're looking at is Twitter. Right now, we have one person using Twitter, and that is our Athletic Director here at Hampden Academy, Michael Bissin. The tool, or the use of that tool for what he's using it for is just phenomenal. He basically, tonight, if you subscribe to his Twitter feed, you'll get score updates from the hockey game as they happen. If he's at a basketball game, he gives it. So even if you can't attend the sport, you get updates on what's going on. If practice is canceled, game is postponed, whatever, it gets out just like that. So it's very nice. Let's Talk is a tool done by K-12 Insights, and that was brought to us by Mr. Lyons, who was at a conference, and he was introduced to it. And we had talked to the company, done some research, and we would be the second school within the state of Maine to actually be using this tool. The Portland school system uses it. And after I go over the next bullet, I'll bring up a quick presentation on what the whole Let's Talk tool is and how it would benefit the district. Right now, we use School Messenger for our school cancellations, and we have quite a few schools that are using it for weekly newsletters. We have Weatherby, Smith, and Reed's Brook. So every week, they send out an email to all the parents with a newsletter, and that way they get it in their inbox. And we want to try to expand that out for Hampden Academy as well as the rest of the schools out there. So this is a quick demo, or a overview of what Let's Talk is.
Everyone has an opinion about public education, their local schools, and you. And those opinions too often go viral, spreading misinformation throughout your district. K-12's Let's Talk helps you control the conversation, transforming a thread goddamn into thoughtful, productive dialogue. Let's Talk, privately on your website, accessible anytime, anywhere, on any device. A voice to be heard and acknowledged by you and your specially-trained team. We know what you're thinking. This is way too much work, and I'll be buried in criticism. Not so. Just knowing you're there and ready to listen engenders immediate goodwill, leading to more supportive feedback and a relationship built on trust. Empire Now Culture. Take control of the conversation and show community every voice counts. With K-12 Insights Let's Talk, your door is always open.
So basically, what this is, is a tool that is embedded into the website, the school, the district website, and it allows community members, parents, or whoever, to interact with the school, the school district. They can have a comment, criticism, suggestion, or anything. And as they go through and enter it, and it can be anonymous, or they can actually put their contact information if they want, and it kind of quickly drills them down to what the subject matter is, and then when they send that email, it goes to that content, subject matter expert. So let's say there was a parent concerned about busing. That would go to whoever is responsible for busing within the district. That person can either call them back, send them an email. The nice thing about that is that is kept in a dashboard, and the metrics are reviewable. So let's say Mr. Lyons is curious on how many comments we've had about budget as we get ready to go into the budget season. He can see what they are, what the actual questions are, and maybe decide, hmm, okay, this one subject is something I probably need to come out and address so there's no confusion, rumors aren't going around with it, and things like that. So you had talked to the Portland Superintendent, and he said that he found it very, very helpful. So so had three phone calls, conversations with the team down there. We're all spun up. They're getting ready to roll out some material for us, and we should be ready to have the product out probably in the next 60 days.
So is, is that part of the overall website design, or is it something you're launching today in the old space?
It'll be launched in the old space and carry over to the new space.
So then what's the strategy for communicating it to the community?
The company actually has a communications package, and we're trying to finalize what that'll look like as far as newspaper articles, radio spots, posters, newsletters, things like that.
Okay, so there's a broad team.
They actually have a plan. They've done this with quite a few school districts throughout the U.S. And so they look at, well, you're a district of this size, and they try to figure out what the best way is, and then their whole team develops that and delivers it.
I have one more question about that. So in this case, the question isn't posted like in a blog. It really only goes to the content expert?
It can only go to the content expert, or it could, we could set it up to say, okay, everything that comes in will go to the content expert and Mr. Janest and Mr. Lyons, just to give them an overview of what's coming in. Doesn't mean they respond to it, per se, but then that way it gives them an overview of all the stuff coming in.
I think Cindy's asking, is it, does it have a presence that other people who are, like, logging in can see what the previous questions that have been asked or comments?
So the thing I'm thinking about is, I think it was on NPR Tonight where they were talking about how Mark Twain said that a lie is halfway around the world while truth is still tying its shoes. I was just thinking about, you know, public discourse. If these questions come up, seeing the questions that are asked and how they're addressed in the community, can, shoes will get tied faster? And so I just, it doesn't sound like that kind of tool. I was just trying to drill in a little bit to understand what the focus was.
No, it's not. Basically, like, if the question goes in for transportation, I could see it, but it would go to the Director of Transportation. So that's the circle of communication with those stakeholders.
Right. But not only that, but then, later on, let's say you're getting five, six, seven, eight of the same type of question. Well, then you probably will come to the conclusion that we need to address this in some fashion. A newsletter, put something on the website. So it allows you to take proactive measure on the hot topics.
One more question. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Amanda.
I was just going to say, there's another YouTube video on this, and it actually shows the dashboard and shows the, and it's not that long, so it's very easy to find on YouTube.
The other piece I'm thinking about is that one of the ways that we can become more community-centric is by having a knowledge base, you know, so that people can actually look these things up. And I wonder, does it collect the responses in a way that could later be accessible and exposed as a queryable knowledge base?
I'll check with the company on that.
I think it does, Jeff.
Yeah, I do. But before I say yes, I want to make sure.
I'm done, I promise.
I've taken details of all that on that YouTube video, actually.
Yeah.
We, when we did our yearly strategy meeting, we had a conversation about what they were doing down in Portland, where they're having an evening. That's something completely separate. This isn't a one-time event. This isn't something.
This is ongoing, you're correct.
This is ongoing. So like, this afternoon, actually, somebody from Hampden somehow caught wind of the survey that had been posted way back when, and they were all wound up about it, and like, everybody quick, go vote. And I was like, well, actually, that's been up for a while. And, you know, there were a lot of people like, oh, this is bad blah blah. And so I interjected the little knowledge I had that said, you know. So I think what you're looking for is like a Twitter account where other people can see the conversations that are going on.
The ongoing. Yep, historically.
And so publishing the responses in a, in a social media fashion so that you dispel the myths and the rumors. So it's, we're not adding this. It was testing the waters, and it's not something that the superintendent can just check off. It has to go through the school board, has to go through the teachers, and has to go through the teachers' union to basically extend their day. And so there is an output for this to social media, or is it, has to be manually done?
It would have to be manually done for this particular tool. Yeah. One of the nice things is with the School Messenger, we're not really using it fully to its capability. One of the nice things with that is you can automatically have it feed Twitter accounts. You could have it, you can granulate it however you want, but if you want to go all out, you could have it make phone calls to the home phone, make phone calls to cellphone, email, send text messages, feed Twitter, feed Facebook, feed webpages. So let's say email does a cancellation. It would automatically, just by him doing that one thing, feed all of that, even though somebody may say, well, I'm just going to be checking my text messages. I'm not going to be actually listening to my phone. So it just kind of gives a median that somebody, everybody will be able to grab hold of if they don't have access to everything.
So like, when there was that lock-in because they thought they saw somebody walking down the street with a gun last year, you could, you could disperse facts about that so that the rumor mill wasn't?
That's correct. That's right. As Amanda alluded to, if you're interested, the Portland school system has this on their website. There's a YouTube on it as well. I do want to interject that Jeff and Becky Moore, who is the secretary here at the high school, Ruth Lyons, and I were ready to meet this morning with Nancy Roberts. Unfortunately, she had a sick child. And I thank Karen for this tip because Nancy Roberts is the Director of Marketing for Nescom. And it struck me when we were hearing the young girl tonight, because Nescom is very interested in partnering with us with their students on capstone projects, website enhancement, all other types of things. So we'll keep you abreast every other month with respect to how we move forward with this advancement of communication, social networking, which is really out of my domain. But certainly, I think, just as Tony's sharing examples, how do we continue to exchange and interact with our citizenry in different ways than we've done ever before?
One of the things we're doing, a little bit of surveying of students right now, because we're in the technology department of the university main system, is we're redoing our website. And what we're hearing over and over again is, I don't want to go to you and get it. I want to Google the question the right way and have the response. And that's got me thinking more and more about how we really need to be focused toward knowledge base and, you know, to be able to query something, what's the bus schedule for Route X, you know?
Let me give you an example that Portland Superintendent shared with me. They did a redistricting down there among the elementary schools. So they did all the information and did the public forums and so on. Then they used the Let's Talk to communicate and dispel the rumors and also give the factual comments, in addition to probably other social mediums as well. But this became a vehicle really to allow the citizenry to engage in conversation with whomever in the system, to have the questions answered, give the facts, and so on.
Did they say anything to the, I know that, in watching that longer YouTube video, it showed how it directs the questions to the appropriate people. But it also, when I was watching it, one of my questions was, it seems like some people may be getting a lot of emails.
He actually shared that because the people in the citizenry feel this is a welcome invite, that the initial apprehension, you'd be overwhelmed, didn't occur. Because people were very comfortable that they just felt naturally that now I have a connection to the school community that I never had before, and really didn't abuse it. Now, me, Portland's a 7,000-student-body school system, so he's had great, great success thus far. But it can be topical also, right? Go back to Tony's experience about when we did the survey on extending the school day, or when we start to deliver the budget here, the next Cindy, Cindy is the Chair of the Budget Committee. It might not be operational then, but, I mean, those are the examples where we can really utilize that too, tool, in a different way than we have before.
Is it going to be live before, like, soon for the budget discussion? Because I think that that would be a great.
No. You said about 60 days, right, Jeff?
Maximum 60 days.
It might be midstream, Karen. It'd be midstream.
It would just be, I think, reflect well on the community if we had that available.
Yeah.
And it gives us an opportunity to educate the community.
Yes, it does.
Well, it actually got me thinking about even the Twitter feed for when you're going to have public, the public budget referendum and things like that.
Well, Jeff mentioned the School Messenger. I mean, the capability that has, I mean, we're obviously just beginning to scratch the surface of that stuff.
So is this part of a bigger holistic plan? So for instance, you know, this for myself with, with school board, I'm trying to be more social. I'm actually an introvert. So, but I keep getting comments of, oh, it's great that you put it on your Facebook page, but I like email.
Yeah.
So I have a distribution list of about 70 people on an email thing, and then I have about 99 people on a Facebook page, and I get some people following on a Twitter feed. And as I've been doing research, I've started following, like, superintendents and principals on Twitter, and some are very active and some aren't. And then, you know, so there's numerous different ways in which people like to get information. So I just wanted to.
And that's, and that's what it is.
That's the beauty of it.
Because, no, some people like email. Some people don't want Facebook. Some people don't want Twitter. So what you're doing is providing the information in all sorts of different means, and then that way, whatever you're comfortable with as, as an individual, you're still getting it. Yeah.
I think it goes back, Jason, to, to when we had our strategic planning session about marketing our district. How do we push information out differently than we ever have before? And as I sent you the article yesterday, where we now have the second virtual school approved in the state. And you feel like people are circling the wagons and shooting in, but we need to be very much promoting our district, and how do we do that in various mediums? That's the best, that's the, that's the game plan here.
Right, right.
Does this also include an internal communication tool as well? We're going through a lot of organizational changes.
Yes.
So is it just for the outside public, or is it?
No, anybody could use it. The Let's Talk, it could be for staff members. Yep, yep. I mean, you could theoretically, you could have somebody on the other side of the U.S. that had a question or a comment or whatever could do it, too. As long as they have access to the webpage, they can, they can post the.
And I'll give you a hint that the, this mark, I'll use the term marketing in public relations, will have a component and a placeholder in the upcoming draft budget as well. Because much like we discussed that in the Ed Committee, you have to have some people monitor this. You just can't, you know, have it happen miraculously, so.
That was going to be my question. So you create this beautiful behemoth.
Well, we have some ideas, Jason. Excuse me.
So it won't be Mr. Woodside running the whole?
Jeff will be a key player, but.
Yeah, okay. Because that's one of the things. So I think that, I know this is my experience, sometimes you launch great stuff, and then if it doesn't keep up, people lose faith pretty darn quick in what it is.
It's very coordinated and communicated.
Yeah, but if you're able to keep it going, then all of a sudden, just like you said, people are, oh, I can go there if I need it. It's very easy, and you might not even hear it, and you might see them on the screen and go, hey, I read that.
Well, I'm going to express appreciation for Jason's comment that he made and John made at the Finance Committee audit Friday morning. We have an impeccable audit, and due to Amel and Ann and Lisa in our office, I mean, it's impeccable. But I think Jason's comment was something like this. You need to have the support and personnel in order to do that and do it well. If you shortchange yourself, and Heath as well, so if you shortchange yourself, you're not going to have fiscal status like we do. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to look at some districts in the last four or five years in close proximity to us that shortchanged themselves, Eric's former district, and cut some. that shortchanged themselves, Eric's former district, and cut some costs and put themselves in a very precarious fiscal state. So the investment and the return is tremendous. I think this is an example, we need to put some investment here and do it and do it well.
It might be a good idea to, like I think about Khan Academy and when they do their educational type things, like you know, I'm very, keep sending me this stuff. I read your presentation, the more I learn, the more I understand and one of the things that, what I was sitting there on that table was, look at Falmouth, look at Yarmouth, look at these folks, they're probably averaging 8, 11,800, $12,000 per student. And we're running about 9,700. And so when you think about our student base, that's between 500, it's a half a million, three quarters of a million dollars that if we had that extra, think about some of the things we could do, but if you go out into the community or if you go over to town councilors and we talked about kind of a unique position they have, that a lot of people would look at and say, wow, we just have a $28 million budget, that's huge.
We're gonna show you, Emil always does this great graph and the people gone through the budget process can envision the graph with me. And we show the graph where we're at our per pupil expenditure, which usually and typically is right at the state average. Then we say, if we were the Falmouth, the Freeport, the Yarmouth or whatever, we'd have $300,000 more, $500,000 more, $800,000 more if we aligned with our per pupil cost. So that gets back to again, having, you know, high efficiency and high performance and have a good return on investment, so. Anything else Jeff? Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just a very quick overview on the Governor's Budget, we'll be seeing more of this, but I wanted to stress two or three key points. In the second paragraph, please note that the draft budget is requiring locals to go from an 8.1 mil to an 8.44 mil increase. Now if that stays in place, that's gonna require, just as it explains there, the locals have a greater effort. Fortunately for us, we're above the essential programs services. What's it called again? No, what's it, when you're about?
Over and under.
Over and under, just over and under.
Over and under EPS.
I stress this because there are a number of districts that don't have amount over EPS. This is gonna require them to raise more money than they ever have before. Because in order to get the state money, you have to have .3 mils more to receive it. So we need to keep an eye on that. The third bullet talks about the retirement money in the 7.5 and FY16 and 8.8 FY17. As you all know now, the state retirement money is embedded in the school district budget. And then the fourth bullet, $6 million to allow the state to pick up local share of charter school tuition, which is a new one. The second bullet from the bottom, we are, as you well know, heavily involved in the bridge year program, so there's allocation, allocation of funds there to support that. And then on the last page, something that hopefully we'll take advantage of because as you all know now, we've brought the VZ financial portfolio under RSU 22. There's now money out there to incentivize districts to consolidate administrative functions. So we're optimistic that we can recoup some of those expenses through that grant.
Something will be retroactive?
I am pretty sure it will be Cindy, yes, yeah. So those are four or five points and again, please become familiar with this because we need to monitor this very carefully over the next two or three months. Any questions or comments from the Governor's Proposed Budget as it stands?
Have you, what feedback did you provide Andre or any other legislators that reached out? Did you provide them with these talking points or...
Not specifically, I did give them some feedback on the charter school provision and I support this versus the old model where it came from the district alone. Hold that thought because I'm gonna share a couple of things in the next presentation. So let's move into the legislative update. And I don't wanna read to you, but I do wanna highlight three or four bills in here. The first one is LD3, which now requires public charter schools to meet the main state learning results. That is a big change.
What a novel idea.
Okay, so for example, Foxcroft Academy, which is a publicly funded private public school, they will have to adhere to that provision. The LD19, student enrolled in the home instruction program is eligible for special ed. That really is not a new change because we've actually embraced that philosophically in our district anyway. Similar to a child that's homeschooled, they wanna participate in extracurricular and co-curricular. Our board policy permits that. Some districts do not though, so I think that's probably the impetus behind. The next one is LD38, which delays one year the implementation of the teacher evaluation model. And in a moment, I'm gonna just remind you again of the Bangor Daily News article I gave you where we're not adhering to the federal guidelines and if we do not, by the middle of March, we run jeopardy of losing federal monies. That is a very significant issue. Next page, LD60 is an act basically to modify the direction where we're moving with teacher retirement and move back to the older system. And what I found kind of intriguing and kinda timely was LD129 making up snow days. This would allow us to add time to each day to make up the days versus having to go a whole day. So in other words, if we went one extra hour, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that equates to five hours, that's a day. We can make up a storm day that day, that way, rather than adding all full days. So pay attention to that one, that one's been heard before. Newport District actually three or four years ago tried to do that and the Commissioner denied the request. So kinda was that an interest, Tony?
How is it that some schools can go a half a day on a Saturday and have that count?
That's permissible. If you go a half a day, that's permissible.
Now, can we interchange, say we had a teacher workshop day, the kids were in-service day, there's gonna be no school, we've blown through seven snow days already. Could we do a half a day since the teacher's gonna be there already?
Yes.
And then have them push the workshop back to the afternoon?
Yes, you could do that.
That is viable?
You can redefine that day, yes you can, okay. And we'll talk more about that in a moment as well. So basically, that's one that kinda interests, so we right now go 175 days, we have nine faculty days as well. So Karen, your question again please, that you asked me.
I was just curious to know what information you said.
The public charter school one I commented and also the implementation of the performance evaluation system of teachers, I did communicate with Andre. Okay, any questions on that? Principal Teacher Evaluation System, I did touch base on that, we just need to continue to monitor that. Reagan left, alright, so we need to make sure, and Martha, is the state board involved in that, where that plays into the federal? Are you having, can you shed any light on that publicly?
Well, I really can't because we're just getting involved with it. Sturdy, we talked to him a month ago, whenever that was, had given us warning that that was gonna happen. So we were aware that the feds are pushing pretty hard.
Alright, okay. So back on Tony's inquiry, if you're counting on your refrigerator back home, June 16th is the last student day. If the board wants to discuss any future meetings and options, I can present those options to you. Not, just outline them with no point of advocacy, but you could go Saturdays if you choose. You could go a day in February vacation or April vacation if you choose. You could modify a teacher in-service day and 50/50 like Tony illustrated earlier, you could do that as well. So maybe I might wanna bring the calendar and we can have a little bit of discussion next board meeting so you can kinda visually see it and see where we are. So right now, our last student day is the 16th, the last faculty day is the 18th. We have two to five inches of snow coming tonight.
How many days are we over currently?
We are over two days, we've missed five days, we've built three in the calendar, so we're over two days.
When you bring that forward, I know some of those in-service days are tied to time in the curriculum and so only bring forward options that don't impact the school year itself.
Yes, I'll talk to Mary about that so we synchronize that, good point.
Speaking of calendars, do we know yet about 2015, 16?
Not definitively, the Administrative Council discussed it yesterday and we're gonna put some substance to it next week. Any questions on that, pardon me?
Tony? Could we, I mean, it seems like the last couple of years, we've easily blown through the three snow days.
Yeah.
Can we explore for future calendar years, proactively saying, okay, this is gonna be a half a day? If we don't blow, you know, start, like for the teacher in-service days for March, April, May and June, we have some of those teacher in-service days, these are tentatively gonna be half days unless we blow through our snow days so that you don't have to, you know, continue to extend the year. You have that cushion built in and if we don't need the cushion, then they're just full in-service days?
If that's an option.
You have your plan already done.
It gets back a little bit, yeah, you could do that as long as we align it with Mary and her PD and timing of all those things, yes, you could do that. Yep.
It seems like three is never enough, I mean...
Really, I often say it doesn't matter if you put in 25 or zero. It's kind of, it's kind of a false, it's kind of a false impression really because the bottom line is you have to go with 175 days.
But a half a day counts as a whole day.
That's correct.
Five hours.
That's correct. So let's say for example tomorrow, we had planned an in-service day and we had a storm day. If we could get a half a day in, fine, then have the other half in service and make some modifications there, absolutely, you could do that.
It's not really a half a day, it's like not going till noon, it's...
Well, we have early dismissal for the high school, it starts at 11:30 with the high school, Reeves Brook and Smith and Wagner. Then our elementary, McGraw, it's 12:30. And see, that's, that's the complete, yeah, well, I'm giving you probably way more than you wanna know here, but what day is today, Wednesday? So Monday, Emil and I were trying to hope that the window opportunity, the window would've been open more because we were trying to get in a half a day. But the problem was, we knew the storm was gonna hit at 12 o'clock to 2 aggressively. Well, our buses are on the road until 2, 2:15, so the window wasn't open large enough for us to go that half day, otherwise we'd have done that. Matter of fact, I had a couple of calls from community members why we didn't do any of that and I explained it to them and I said, okay, that makes sense. So we always look at that option to try to, you know, get that half day in there, but it's very, it's very precarious sometimes.
I swear that messenger feature would be nice because you could send that out to everybody in the community. Look, the reason we didn't do a half a day is because it's not that simple. If we had a class of, you know, 50 kids, yeah, we could organize it, like 200, 200 students. People don't consider the logistics of the whole school district, they think of just their kid and their one class.
Well, and the person asked me a great question, they said, well, while I have you on the phone, why did you cancel school last Wednesday when it didn't snow? I said, great question, the problem is we couldn't get to our schools. And in fact, I was over here at 11 o'clock and I could barely maneuver the traffic flow in here. So it wasn't snowing, but we had two feet of snow and we couldn't get the buildings open, so.
Yeah, you can get in here for the game, right, there's a game, I wanna say night, right that we kept, or that's, I forget, but it was hard. Even at 6 o'clock at night.
We knew we could do that, but because of the, it is too much information, but when I was calling, and this is the first time that we've ever done that we weren't ready. He just, Sergeant Corporation, all the plow guys just said, it just keeps blowing back, we just can't do it. We just can't do it, just like, you know, it's just like your house.
That's what I was gonna say, I think we're all starting to run out of, I mean, still gonna...
Okay, so I'll bring that back at the next meeting.
I would say that, I would say that's that, I think when we're looking at how to manage the calendar, we need to remember that a half a day is not a full academic day and we don't wanna shortchange the students either. I mean, it's not good enough to just get them here, give them a snack and then send them home, you know, which is what happens in an abbreviated day, they miss a big chunk of curriculum. So when we think about how to best manage that, we need to think about getting them the most exposure to the most academics as well.
Yeah, plus the logistics of it. But I will tell you some positive comments at least that I've received from calling early. So not getting the 5:30 call, but knowing that, hey, there's no way we're going to school tomorrow, so we're gonna call. I think one day it was like 7 o'clock at night and...
That's rare though.
I know it's rare.
That's rare.
It's blown out the TV before.
A lot of things have changed between 9 o'clock and 6:00 in the morning, Jason. The only other time, actually, the only other time we did that in my 23-year tenure here was the ice storm.
Yes.
That's for multiple days.
Matter of fact, my wife, as you know, I think, I think you know, is a first grade teacher, so she came home one night, she said, I just wanna let you know the comment my children said today, and I said, what's that? She said, well, they really liked it, Mr. Lyons, when you called off school the night before. A little pressure there, but I mean, that's a first grade.
He must have grabbed our boot up.
No pressure, okay. Mariah?
Well, we have had quite a few disruptions with the snow days, but we're getting back into snow days hopefully tomorrow. At the end of January, we had midterm week at high school. Our sports teams are doing very well and today there was a math meet in Orno that I think 40 kids went to.
Forty kids from Hampden Academy?
Yes.
Cool.
Okay, Mariah?
Most of the report is really under new business on a boat, so nothing further than that.
Thank you Kelly.
Great, questions of board members, are there any to see now?
I have one. So when we look at the evaluations of our teachers and the way we have our assessment set up and everything like that, has the board given any guidance to the maximum number of students that we'd expect a teacher to assess?
No. Basically, just use it simplistically, that is, you're the building principal of school A, you're responsible with the faculty in that school. We don't look at the students in that school to say, okay, one principal for 300 kids, whatever the case may be. Now, we did, through the Education Committee, and Niles did a great job with the committee basically saying, what support can we build in for our K through 8 principals because they don't have assistants?
Yeah.
Mrs. Jaley with the high school has an assistant principal and assistant principal AD, academic team leaders and so on. So there's some infrastructure there, but we really had basically nothing, K through 8. And we did do some stopgap measures for that and that's another theme while having the budget by the way too, to give some idea, how can we give support to the K through 8 principals because of the size of the school, not only student based, but faculty based.
I think that's not quite your question, is it?
Yeah, that's one thing, like I'm reading the report card and I thought to myself, okay, so the FESAD teacher assesses every student that they have. The music teacher assesses every person they have. If you're like an art teacher.
Yeah.
And so then I started thinking about the high school, I've only gone to one meeting with Reagan so far and then you look at the number of students that a teacher may be exposed to because everybody's changing all the time. And then all of a sudden, I started thinking to myself, oh my goodness, you could spend your entire time assessing. And so I just wondered if we had, if it, one, is it a role and two, had we thought about any type of guidance for, you know, how do we assess all these different kids that some of our teachers go into? Whereas if I'm, you know, a second grade teacher, I have my second grade class, right, you know, I have like 20 kids. But it seems to be, the more I look into this, it seems to get more complicated as we move into specials and into, you know, the higher grades where people are switching around and stuff, so I just didn't know if we...
Mary, do you wanna comment on Jason's point or question?
Well, really, everybody has quite a few people that they need to assess. If you look at the elementary level as an example, although they don't have a lot of content area and many students going through it, they have many contents with the same, so for an example, for an elementary teacher on any given day, you might be assessing in reading, writing, science, social studies and mathematics, whatever. If you've got five content areas and 20 students, then that's 100 that you're doing too. So everybody's got quite a few that they need to do. I don't know, did I answer your question?
Yeah, it's a good comparison, I was just thinking like if I'm a gym teacher at McGraw, what, I have 200 some odd kids to...
330.
330 some odd kids to assess and it was multiple categories, it wasn't just, they can walk.
Well, I'm looking at Mrs. Jaley, you have roughly 700 students here, you have two physical education teachers.
Right, but they, but it's, you know, the, it's freshmen and sophomores who have to take phys ed. They, we do offer courses that they assess at at the junior senior level. At the high school level, for a typical teacher, I've tried to keep it at about 90 to 1. I mean, it varies, but that's kind of my rule of thumb. But that doesn't, you know, phys ed certainly doesn't, they fall out of that range. Music people fall out of that range. And then you think about Napador, one of our K through 8 music teachers, I don't know how many kids he has.
Cause he's been to multiple schools, right?
Yes.
Cause he's got both my daughters, so he's got K through...
Well, he has Wetherby, he has McGraw, so there's 650, 700 kids.
That's who has, he's Wetherby, McGraw, and the band.
We also use the essential programs and services that to do the student teacher ratios and we tend to be above. So I think we're in better shape in some districts even though we have these situations.
So is this something that this board would do or would that be more part of, I don't know if Reagan's still here, but that as she's building out that committee, is that more something that that committee should be, you know, as we're talking, kinda looking at how we solve for...
Are you talking about testing them or like assessing them in terms of taking the class and grading them?
Yeah, like...
I think that's what they, that's what they do.
It's their job.
So they're, so if we have too many kids, then the administrative team in that group would come forward and ask for more personnel. I mean, that would be how that would work, that would come from the building level, generally speaking. It doesn't mean we couldn't review it as a board, but that's... It doesn't mean we couldn't review it as a board, but that's kind of how it happens now.
So they put it all together to come through the upcoming budget?
It could be a presentation of the ed committee, that's where it really goes, the current construction.
Awesome, thank you.
I think this is where, is a really good example of conversation where the board fits in terms of policy. And the building principals fit and the superintendent in terms of the on-the-ground management. You know, our job is to support policy and budget in terms of the requests and of the community. But certainly we set policy in practice, and to our expectations as a board, our strategic plan is to have the right-sized staff, teachings, you know, with the right-sized classrooms. So that's where we operate, not down in that, you know, that decision-making level. It would be like negotiating, for example, what the hours of a building are. That's board policy, that isn't, you know, building principal policy, so there's a place for each thing.
We come at it in a couple of different angles, so like music, for example, that's one of our interest areas and in our strategic plan. And when we start to talk with the people about are we going to do a school within a school? Then if we branch out in that area, the board would have a lot of say in how that was sort of our vision for that structure and how it would be staffed. And one of the rationales we could use is, Mr. Mador has ten thousand kids, and you could do a better job if there were two of them, you know? And so we would bring it in that way, I think, Jason, it would be a more apt way that we would be doing it. But certainly, there are requests that come to the superintendent all the time for additional staff. And if he feels those have merit, then those come here, usually for our endorsement.
A good example, last year, the process of the budget committees, we had a presentation by Principal Morris Smith that very eloquently conveyed to the board and administration that we had a dire need to put more resources in children at Smith School that were missing reading instruction. As a result of that, we added two educational technicians in the budget to support her need there.
And that's what she presented on, I think a few months ago, that all kids are now getting.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So there was a good vision for the investment that we made and the return on that.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Are there other questions, Stephen?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I'm on, I'm on study group for NASP, the National Association, on leadership. And I just, I find it interesting because of what Victor Ross said. It is a problem all over the country. And we're learning how much of a problem it is, at the principal level, at the assistant principal level, at the superintendent level, at all levels. So I have a lot of information if anybody wants it.
Great, thank you, Martha.
So are you too early in your study group, Martha, to talk about what they're seeing as some of the root causes, or is that something you can come back with later?
Yeah, we've only had one meeting.
Oh, you're probably early.
Yeah, you know, I have some materials because we had a group from U Penn that were helping do the study group. It's called SEPRE, it's like Mepre, but it's whatever their thing. And they had a lot of information, actually from all over the world. We had a presentation regarding what they do in England, for example, to keep the principal, but they don't call them principals, they call them something else, but the pipeline coming. So I do have some materials, I can, I could post them and email them to folks if they want. A lot of it is ponderous, though, and so.
I was looking for bullets.
I think what I give you is, actually, one of the interns actually did an outline of one of the bigger articles, and that's four pages. That's something that's manageable.
The other question I have is, I wonder if in this exploration, it's actually going to look at, where does leadership, what, leaders, where does leadership need to come from to run these schools? They've traditionally come through the teacher path. But is the causal relationship, the people that come into teaching have a reason? And if the must-do path is that you've been a teacher or had a teacher education to be a principal and superintendent, could that in part be part of the problem?
Well, I also think we have to think more broadly because there's teacher leaders. We don't necessarily need to call them a principal in order for them to be leaders. And that's a pool that I think sometimes we forget about.
So that's also an aspect of the teacher, not just the building administrator, but that other disciplinary side.
Right, and Pykes kept saying coaches, you know, that that was their big thing, they wanted coaches. Well, that's a place for teacher leaders to be very effective.
I've often thought for many years, the point you're driving very key, is that the certification of leaders needs to change, in my estimation. There's no reason why people from the private sector, or managers and leaders in banking, whatever, through the proper training, can't become a leader in a school. But because they never have been a teacher, or never been a principal, you can't be a superintendent. To me, that's totally ridiculous.
And that's actually what I was getting at, because I just read an excellent article around challenges for women to get venture capital. Because women who lead technology companies tend not to be engineers, yet there's this perception you have to be an engineer to lead a techno, the most successful ones weren't. And this really got me thinking about this other problem, you want people with leadership capabilities and strength, you don't, and they need to understand what purpose of teaching and learning is. So it's an interesting conversation, I'd love to hear more from Martha as she goes through it.
I think we'll see Martha reportedly say certification question.
It would be interesting too, I think, Rick, to share, to take a look at the professional development we've sponsored here around leadership and helping people get their superintendent certification who, you know, have not gone on to become superintendents. So, you know, but kind of a return on the investment.
And I do also have this book, the head of our study group is Phil White, Dr. White's from West Virginia. And it's a fairly short book, if anybody would like to borrow it. I have it.
Thank you.
Can you just tell me the author one more time?
Charles Pope and William White, What Leaders Believe. Mine is autographed, so I will get it back. I will get it back.
Martha's seat on the state board is invaluable to us in terms of her exposure at a national level to what's happening. So I appreciate you bringing that back. I would also use this opportunity to thank the district. In my role as main school board association president, they have sponsored my trips to national conference for years and years and years. And now that I'm immediate past president, you drop off the cliff and they no longer sponsor you. So I have pieced together the ability to go. So I actually had like a scholarship for the, the biggest cost was the cost of the conference itself, nearly a thousand dollars. So I received a scholarship to go to that and approached Rick and he agreed in on our director of budget. There was enough to pay for my plane ticket. And I am bunking with someone else's room, it's paid for. So I mean, I have pieced it together to be able to go, and this district was kind enough to support me in doing that, so I want to say thank you publicly. So you also, the folks know that that's happening.
More tracks and cowboy boots when you come back.
Nashville, so I'm going to Nashville, so I'll bring back lots of information as well. The keynote speaker is Arianna Huffington, so I'm interested to see her. And at this conference, I have heard Sandra Day O'Connor, Sal Khan, Bill Clinton, so it's major folks, Neil deGrasse Tyson was there. So they have some really, really good and inspiring keynote people, and so it's always a good one. Montell Williams, I think, is also going there this year. So there's that. Any other questions? Any other things to update people on? Committee reports, findings?
Do you want to report out? Cindy was there, John was there, Heath was there.
Who is our chair?
We don't have a chair.
We don't have a chair?
Well, why?
Do it. You are well the chair.
Maybe we should have a chair.
Okay, last Friday, we had our audit report. Our audit was very favorable. Our audit is based, I don't, can't really remember the terminology, but in three tiers. Basically, big problems, medium-sized problems, and very little problems. And very little problems are really that, they are problems that don't really matter. And that was all we really had, we had a couple, just a couple mistakes as far as filing, or what was it, like a checks coming from a school or something. So it was, so it was very favorable. Our auditor, once again, like she always does, has asked us for more fund balance. But I think we're, our fund balance is actually more favorable than it's been in all twenty years, a few things. So we're really in good shape as far as that goes.
Yes, very favorable. You might want to just maybe, even one minute, explain how the fund balance is even more favorable in the sense of how we have summer loan pay encumbered.
Yeah, a lot of districts, their fiscal year goes from July one to June thirtieth. But teacher contracts go from September one to August thirty-first, so there's two, there's five payrolls that overlap the fiscal year. This district was bold in about maybe six, seven years ago, where we have, we do have the money in the bank to pay teachers June thirtieth if ever anything would ever happen. So in other words, if we stop existing as RSU twenty-two on June thirtieth, there is money in the bank to pay, it's encumbered, in other words, it's already going to be spent. But it's there, ready to go on June thirtieth. And a lot of people don't do that. And so that's one of the healthy pieces of our fiscal, where we are right now, fiscally. The other piece is that, for the first time, we have about two hundred thousand dollars that is unassigned. In other words, there's nothing, this money is above and beyond out of the twenty-eight point eight million dollar budget, that it's nothing assigned to expend for. And that's the first time that has occurred in many, many years, since the Medicaid reimbursement money has stopped flowing for us since maybe seven, eight years ago. So we're pretty healthy. And if you look at the minutes, what Heath is referring to, there are no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses at all. And the other, the third piece is other matters, which is what he means, means nothing, just maybe some type of accounting process or procedure. There were a couple of components in regards to the checking accounts of schools. But we have no, we have no deficiencies and no material weaknesses, which is, which is, in my opinion, pretty significant.
So a couple of points I'd like to have you put in the budget, congratulations to himself and Lisa and him, because this is really where the rubber meets the road, if you will. But I also want to, based on some of the questions we're having tonight, I also want to show you very vividly how the board took a position here to where we didn't want to be, to where we are today. In the late nineties, very early two thousand, this district had a zero fund balance, zero. And I'll never forget, I'll never forget the numbers, we had a sixteen million dollar budget and we had a fund balance of sixteen hundred. And the board said, Mr. Lyons and Mr. Ness, we want you to increase that fund balance up to ten percent in year two thousand two, two thousand five, I'm making the years up, two thousand two, two thousand five, two thousand seven, two thousand ten. The board set the goal, set the policy, set the expectation, and the administration and the board now not only met that goal, we've exceeded the standard. Because we didn't have summer loan pay accrued at that time either. I mean, we'd have gone bankrupt, we'd had to sell the buildings to pay the teachers off. And now we're in a very favorable position because of the position and the posture the board directors took. And there's a prime example how that sense of unification between the board and the administration came together to bring us to where we are. Now, this is wonderful news, this is how superintends get fired. Superintends don't get fired.
You mean with the report?
Because Johnny can't read, but Johnny can add and subtract. I'm serious with that, I mean, you don't fool around with this stuff. You don't fool around with the finances.
I think what happened at Rockland is a great example of just what can happen to a community, just in terms of the lies and truth problem, perception. You have a school district that can't figure out where its money is.
And again, I'm going to pick on Jason, because Jason, I think, asked a question, something like this at the meeting. This is what town councils need to know. Town councils need to know the stability of where we are and the extreme favorable positions we're in. Because it doesn't take too much to go south.
And that's one of the things too, that, and if anybody, I don't know, I know a member of the board, but Emel's been fantastic about, I think he's sending me documents every couple of days. I sit down that night, I read them, and it really helps me to kind of understand and ask questions. And I think it's making me better as a public too, and when I think about, you know, the role I'm in, you hear people pointing fingers and stuff like that. And I think one of the things that's going to be important for us when we think about marketing is the value of a school district to a community. And when you look at what we have, we do have people in this community that just want to cut, 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 cut. Well, if you want to cut, 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 go someplace that doesn't have anything, right? And really getting people to understand that, if you have a very viable district in which attracts people that want a good education for the kids, property values go up, community morale goes up. But we got to find a way to bridge that gap so that people understand that and they kind of feel a part of that, as opposed to kind of sitting on the outside. That's why I talked a little about that holistic part, one of my other goals is, some of the roles I have, is to, I've already started talking to some members of the town council and some other places to really get an understanding of we're a team, we're not, you know, it's not the town council, it's not the community, it's not the district, it's not the rack, it's not, and then the community. It's not four different pillars, it's all together, and you've been great as far as giving me the knowledge, I need to ask more questions. But then when people bring something up, I can say, well, look at this, if that's what you'd like to have, then here's what we want to do, just like in business, where some people are just automatically going to see that twenty-eight million. And, you know, like, a lot of people don't understand that almost eight million is a lot, really is not that, not control, you can't stop the buses, you can't not pay your debt, and your facilities, right? You can't, you know, so now you've got a twenty million dollar budget of what you're working with, you know, twenty-three hundred kids. So it's been, it's been super, and I appreciate the invite to the meeting, but I'd encourage everybody, if you haven't dug into kind of what goes into making those numbers, definitely do. And then, but it also helps me to ask more questions, of which, you can see Emel sent me another document that helps me understand it, which I appreciate, so.
Well, we are in the education business.
That's right.
A well-educated electorate is an important part of what we should be doing. So, great, I appreciate that. There was, I saw recently another article in which Handen made a top ten or top twenty list, and I didn't see that in our packet, but. I don't know, we're constantly making, you know, there's, we're constantly on these lists of best schools, we were on that one that came through. And then there was like, I think, safest communities or something, I'm not sure. I see them a lot, but I think we should take advantage when we see those, be those, because those should be on our website too, and any citations from any national publications. Okay, nothing from budget, athletic committee, Mr. Morris not here, who will be giving that report?
We didn't have a meeting.
Oh, got canceled, okay. So next is ed committee, Niles?
We did meet today, and we continued our discussion on the foreign language proposal. Mary returned to us an expanded version of the, sort of the draft and the direction in which it's headed. We are going to be, I think, really putting the rubber to the road over the next few weeks as a committee, meeting more often to put a proposal before the budget committee that has a real number attached and then a longer-term vision for how we're going to carry that out. And then we also had a guest speaker named Emily Maynard, who's a recent grad of the Haldale School, that Amanda timely set up and is now a student at University of Maine. Haldale School is one of the first efficiency-based high schools, school systems to be developed in Maine. And she spoke about her experience there, starting in grade seven, going through grade twelve, what some of the pitfalls were, some of the good things, bad things. It was an interesting conversation, a lot of, a lot of good insight, I thought.
Great, thank you. And that's it that I have that have exhibits, are there other committees, John, UTC, or anything?
Well, UTC, as happens almost every month, UTC's meeting is tomorrow night, so at our next meeting, I'll give the report.
Great, what happened last month, John? I don't think we met, we didn't meet this, we didn't meet our second time. No policy considerations tonight, old business, discuss and act on proposed disposition of the Newburgh Elementary School.
You have in your packet, that was previously mailed to you before, the term sheet for proposed disposition of Newburgh Elementary School. I've had a couple of questions from board members. One of the questions was on a third-party sale, and I put that in your board update, the explanation for that. And I'm going to have Heath Miller help me out with this. Our recommendation is to approve the term sheet as presented. And basically what this is, is that we will continue to coexist with the Newburgh Elementary School until the debt's paid in two thousand twenty-two. The intent is that the town of Newburgh will be more responsible for the building's infrastructure and more responsible in running the facility and renting out the facility and take kind of off our back that type of responsibility. So that's the intent of this term sheet. During the seventh year, when the debt is paid, the town of Newburgh will have the option to purchase the building for a dollar. And that they will have to go through the process of a refer and propose the school building. And that that building will not be considered a school building anymore, but will be designated more as a community center for the town of Newburgh. more as a community center for the town of Newburgh. In my opinion, and my recommendation, we went through a long process with this, as I think this is a good step in the right direction. And then the next step would be, we didn't meet tonight, but the McGraw, because the question's always asked, will we ever need that space? Right now, with the enrollment numbers, the answer is no. However, with the McGraw, whether it be complex master plan that we're going to be conducting in the next one to three years, I say that would have to be incorporated with those facilities. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I think we've coexisted since 2010. It's been a good relationship for us. It's going to continue to be a good relationship. I think they benefit from it, we benefit from it, but I think they need to take more responsibility in the facility. And that's what this term sheet is saying. Heath, I need you.
Yeah, I think this is a big deal for both of us. I, I think that the town, at least the town manager and the, and the select person that we met with, are very happy with this, with this situation. And Evo and I, we represented, I represented the board. And so, you know, we made sure that this was a good deal for us. And actually, taking out the capital improvements that may have to be done as far as like the boiler or anything major that happens, the driveway needs to be done. That'll be, nobody's going to be looking for us to do that. So I think it's a win-win situation. I mean, we still use that. I personally want to see that building used for what it's being used for, for the early childhood development program, for as long as we can. So.
And that's an option that will continue.
Right. And as, and as far as using the building for, for K through anything, I mean, my kids never went there. They went, I think they went to preschool there, but they never went K through, through six or whatever it was at the time. But it's, it's definitely a positive thing. I would never want to see them go back there. And I'm sure there's people that would, but it's definitely been a positive situation for my kids. So I would not want to see that happen, for anything. And it would only be for a couple of grades, and it really would be, it wouldn't be a cost-effective situation, I don't think.
So we didn't have enrollment enough. And I think when we look at long-term planning, and I think this is a good example, like, we're, we're going to make a decision in a few minutes about something that's going to happen in 2022. Right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. So these are the sorts of things that when we do, we make a decision at this table, they have long, there's a long arm that goes, that goes with them. So it's just something to be, to be thinking about. But I do think that when we think about 2022 and what the Newburgh Elementary School, and that is not going to be a 21st century learning environment. And my kids went there and it was lovely when they went there. And they started at one door. And when they got to the other door, they went all the way around the gym. When they got to the other side, they were ready to leave. But that's not the kind of schools that our budgets support anymore. I mean, those are, aren't things of the, of the past. And so these bigger places, more cost-effective places to educate kids are where we're going to be headed. So I would definitely be in support of turning it over. And I think it's very positive. We have a good relationship with the, with the Newburgh. That has not always been the case. It's been contentious in the past. And so if we're at this place, it's, it's good news for everybody.
So our, our recommendation is, you have the verbiage in your board notes. We'd like to have a motion in a second to move this forward.
And do we need it read as it's in here?
Yes. Yeah, I would appreciate that. Sure.
So can someone, is someone willing to make that motion?
I move that we approve the term sheet for proposed disposition of the Newburgh Elementary School, which was presented on January 7, 2015. Do I need to go further?
Yes.
Yes.
And we authorize the superintendent to negotiate a formal agreement with the town of Newburgh incorporating these terms. Which formal agreement shall be subject to approval by this board?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm moving seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? And that's the MS. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There is no new business, so meeting dates, do we need some?
We do. We do. Did we say Ed committee, Niles?
We were looking at next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and it's blown out. Is Thursday working? Wednesday's better.
So Wednesday, the 11th?
Mary, Wednesday, 11th?
What time? We're not doing?
As we're negotiating.
Are we waiting till after DCA?
Yes, we are. Yes.
That's what I thought.
So they're like, 6 o'clock?
Six o'clock?
Okay. 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock on the 11th. Good.
Just change the name of the meeting.
Okay. And negotiations, you're waiting on something?
Our next negotiation's being moved to 24. You can see it on your calendar. And we're, we're going to discuss that in a moment, in a second.
Okay. And we are, just a note here, normally we would meet on the third Wednesday. And we're, obviously, that's school vacation, so we won't be meeting, we'll be meeting instead on the 25th.
Correct.
Instead of 11th.
Yes.
We have to cancel it.
You have the choices. And WBRC hasn't responded to which one's good, but I have Monday, February 9, at 5:30, Thursday, February 12, at 5:30, or Wednesday, March 11. The reason why it's late in March, I, I am attending my brother's funeral in San Diego last week of February, so I will not be here. While the middle of Feb, the 25th to the, to the 5th, I'll be in San Diego at that. So the dates are Monday, February 9, Thursday, February 12, Wednesday, March 11, at 5:30. There's no urgency to this, but I'd like to get, for us to get the ball rolling on it. So it doesn't really matter if we can wait till the other days, because it's getting really busy. So whatever your pleasure is.
Who's on the building committee with Martha?
Niles, Jason, and Martha. Right? And Tony, you could, Tony would be interested in that.
The 9th is fine with me.
Okay.
The 12th would be difficult if I'm 30.
Okay.
If it were later, it's possible.
6?
The 11th is, the 11th is okay.
That's March 11.
At March 11?
March 11, okay.
The 9th I'm here until 5:15 anyway, so I could just stay.
So why don't we set it at March 11? Why don't we set it at March 11? Is 5:30 okay, March 11? Okay, good.
What time you?
5:30.
So, Niles, let's make sure we don't schedule an education meeting on that.
It's actually good to think that we want to go out and do one for the 24th, before the board meeting, or 25th?
On Ed committee meeting?
Because we only did one, but.
25th?
Did we say 5:30 to 6:00? We said 5:30. Thank you. And we said 6 for Ed?
Yes.
And so Cindy, you're saying?
Do we want to get one on the books for before the board meetings?
For the 25th?
SOP.
Yep. I think that's a good idea. I, I could not make it until 6 at the earliest probably, if that's all right, but.
That's much better for me.
So 6 o'clock on the 11th and 6 o'clock on the 25th, Red Committee. Building Committee's on March 11 at 5:30. Any negotiations?
Policy here.
Rick Moore didn't get back to me on the athletic, so I'll give you some dates on the, on the next athletic committee.
I'd really like to be able on that, too.
Yeah, I would, too. I think, and you know what, what's, what's going to occur, I think, coming out of that committee, is going to have a result on the budget, too.
Right.
I think it will, in regards to the marketing piece.
So reach out to Mr. Moore and get some dates so that we can.
I'll reach out to Mr. Moore.
Gloria can send the updates.
Policy, Eric?
Policy. What's your special, like, Martha?
Martha's policy?
Yeah, well, I thought we had a, had a date that we were going to do. What? It was, it was the second Monday or second Tuesday of every month? But it's not on the calendar.
Right.
We did pick a date. I don't have it in my calendar.
Because we canceled the meeting. That was the first one. And then we had to cancel it because of negotiations.
Right. Exactly. Well, Monday, the 23rd of February.
Anybody who knows how to use an iPhone, would they please help me?
Mariah.
I will say, I have a problem making evening meetings the last week of February. My husband's gone, so childcare is an issue for me. I'll try and make the board meetings, but two nights that weekend might be a little much.
Monday, March the 2nd.
I can't do the 2nd, but I can do the 9th.
Tonight?
I can't wait to do doodle polls or Google doodle.
It's so nice.
Yeah. It works so well.
Want to do that? I can do that. Do I do that for the policy committee?
Not the, not the email one, but like, here are all your choices.
I'll do that here for policy, okay?
All right. Well, doodle policy.
Doodle the policy.
I think we should do that with all our meetings.
Doodle everything.
Who can do what? And we don't have to discuss it. Discuss it at like here. We could, we should do that for the social event.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, is the social?
Doodle the social.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Whatever doodling is, it sounds like you're good. You're waiting to see that, though, when you talk to Doodle it.
So you give us like two dates.
Google the doodle.
And we all respond. And it's basically like Survey Monkey, essentially.
It's doodle.com.
And so if majority will win, you know, most people that can come.
So doodle policy, you got it?
Okay.
You got it. All right.
So we need an executive session. So can someone make a motion for us to enter executive session? And we need to repeat it, like it is here.
I move we enter executive session to discuss negotiations between RSU 22 and the TRID22 Education Association, according to one MRSA 405.
I'm moving seconded. All of them favor. Thank you. So we'll be in executive session.